The anxiously, anxiously awaited beginning. It's called mean to order, let's stand for our pledge. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. For you. Welcome to our Monday meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leighbyha materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Certainly.
There are a motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution honoring retirees? We have, we had another retiree in the, between our last meeting and this one. And so there's a need to make a motion to approve that resolution as well. We have a motion for Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. It's in discussion. Can't remember her name.
Sandy Gillingham.
Ms. Gillingham is retiring. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Madam Clerk, donations.
Okay. Sperryville Community Foundation donated $250 to the FFA program. Stephanie Cash donated $50 for raffle prizes for Senior Week. Atlantic Union Bank donated $100 for raffle prizes for Senior Week. Doctors Rippon and Anaro Orthodontics donated $150 to the Boys Basketball Liberty Team Camp. John Croft donated $250 to the Basketball Liberty Team Camp. And Jimmy Swinmore donated $160 to the Basketball Liberty Team Camp.
Great. Thank you very much. The donations are accepted and appreciated during the approval in the consent agenda. We've had opportunity to review the minutes from our May 9th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? I have a motion from Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum, is there any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Verification of the bills tonight. Ms. Meyer has taken opportunity to review the bills. Forrest, did you have any comments on that?
Nope, they look just fine.
Thank you. We're going to approve those, the pay-in of the bills during the consent agenda as well. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Certainly.
A motion from Mr. Rubin, is there a second? Second from Ms. Meyer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first report of the superintendent tonight is really not a report of the superintendent, but that of Dr. Bolt. So I will ask her to come to the podium to give you the most recent facilities update.
Dr. Bolt, if you get tired of standing, you, you will, can, we could just take the mic and let you sit down.
Actually, I'm going to let Kristen, who is-
Great, thanks, Kristen.
Who has been my intern this summer. She's been my leg, so I'm going to let her do the facilities and I will pick up what she's done, just to give her the experience also. She's been very beneficial.
Yay.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Bolt. So, the sodium and staff have been very busy this summer. They're well underway with summer projects.
Yes, please.
The library is having a specific overhaul. They have done the painting in there, they're working on the floor now, I believe. Last week, they put in wiring in the floor. So it's going to look really great. There's going to be some new flooring that's indestructible going in there. It's going to look amazing when it's done. We're also working on the culinary room. We're having commercial for the food grade flooring going in. We're building a closet, overhauling the wiring and plumbing in that room as well. At elementary school, we have 24 classrooms being remodeled. New flooring, new desks, new cabinets for the teachers, interactive monitors, lots of new things going there. That is well underway. We, the floor has been laid in about six of those rooms already so far, and looks amazing. And then the bathrooms here are getting a remodel. They're going to gut everything and put in new sinks, new stalls, everything. And then they're replacing the AC units, those bard, um, those-
Bards, HVAC units.
Those HVAC units, they're called bards, I learned, are being replaced. And that's going to help with just the, help with our- Yes, what is that called, when things are more efficient? Things are going to be more efficient. And then this part, Dr. Bolt will present.
So, the county has approved to do repeaters in our schools for the radio, sheriff's radios, because when they're in the bowels of our schools, the radios do not work. So we had a company come out and give us a quote on it, and Gary got it approved through the board supervisors. So that will be very effective for our sheriff's office in case of a crisis, to be able to communicate effectively. And they will, so throughout the building, they'll put these repeaters. And then in the corner of this school, on the gym, they're shooting towards call pepper. And so they'll pick up call pepper signal, so that they can, we can have communications in the school, which is a big safety for us. So it's, I'm pretty excited, and that starts the week of July 17th. Yeah, that's a safety issue. So now, the solar updates. Okay. Sky NRG is the gentleman that Larry Grove said that I should check with. And they came out and they were looking at the aux gym. So putting solar on the aux gym in the pavilion, because for the educational purposes. So they were, they don't normally do commercial, they do residential. But they did put a proposal together for us. If you hit the next slide. Oops, something happened. Okay, that's like out of order. So the installation is 322,752 cents for the gym, 12,200 for the pavilion, which brings it to 334,952. With the federal infrastructure bill, they would get a 30% discount, but they would put, so the total cost to us would be 234,466 dollars. Then we have Secure Solar Futures, who is, their business model is working with schools. And they came in with a proposal that year one, we would have energy savings of $5,695. So there's no upfront cost with this, but we would get that savings. And then after 25 years, we'd have 389,808 dollars in savings. So what happens is, they produce the energy, we buy the energy for them at a reduced cost. And, next slide, please. So zero capital to the schools, zero maintenance for the solar panels, zero risk to the schools if they don't perform. And so it costs less for solar than it does. So we would look at 389,000 over 25-year period. And there is a curriculum enhancement component. And I did ask about roof leaks. And so their proposal is just to put it on the high school, because of the asphalt roof at the elementary school. It's not conducive, it's going to cause problems. And the aux gym, according to this company, if they put it on there, because the angle of the roofs, it would not be effective, because half of it would be shaded all the time. So you wouldn't have, it wouldn't be effective. But with the metal roofs, they clip them on, they don't drill down in. So, and I did ask the question that, so we have a roof leak, and the solar panels are there. It is our cost to remove the solar panels and fix the roof leak, and then have the solar panels put back on. So that is a factor.
How much of a factor?
Well, I don't know the, this is a preliminary. We'd have to, if you, whatever you decide to do tonight, if you want-
What's the current age of our roof? What's the current age of our roof at the high school? And what is, what's its warranty, you know, what's its expected life?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head. I did give that information to the solar company. But it is a metal roof, and it was, it was put on when the new wing was done, so 2000? Yes, so around 2000. But it is a metal roof, and they last a long time. And the only leaks we've had on that metal roof have been flashing. I can tell you that now. The only thing I've had repaired was flashing around vents and-
Do we have any kind of warranty on the roof, and you got a maintenance contract?
No. We do not. I do have a representative, that, from Solar, Secure Solar Futures. They're out of Harrisonburg. They have done a school in Orange. And from my perspective, and this is my, you do with what you want, this seems, out of all that I've brought before you, the most cost-effective, if you wanted to move ahead with solar, way to do this. So, again, you make your own decisions, but if you have any questions about it, this is the man who can answer them for you. So I did bring back up tonight, because I thought you might have some questions. But, so you can either decide we don't move forward at all with either, that we move further on with one of the companies, and, and see what the final proposal is, and all the nitty gritty. But of all the different things that I've brought you, I think this is probably the best that we've seen. And it, I've talked to Doug Arnold in Orange County, whoever saw that project, and he's been happy, and they're getting ready to do another project with Secure Solar. So they have a record with public schools. So, I don't know if it's worth it for 389,000 over 25 years. I mean, you know, it's our environment, so that's a plus. And there is a curriculum.
Plus, there's a, the learning component, which we can't forget.
And they do do, if we do incorporate, use this company, they offer internships for our school, our students also. So that's an added plus. Did you have any questions for?
Yeah, I'm-
Do you want to step up and tack a question? I'm sorry, this is Lauren.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. We've only zoomed.
Can you introduce yourself to the group, please?
Sure. I'm Lauren Swartzen-Duber. Brief introduction, I'm former president of Eastern Menonite University, and we did a project. The company was started by a business professor at Eastern Menonite in Harrisonburg, and we were the first customer. Library roof, 2010. And then I retired from that position, and he hired me in business development. That's the short introduction.
That's how you got to where you're at.
Yes. So, the, let me just say, as, as was said earlier, we've done a good number of public school districts. Augusta County is the largest that's completed now, but we signed a contract with Prince William County, Northern Virginia, and we're in the process of doing about 12 of their buildings toward a total of 95, potentially. So that's, they're the second-largest school district in Virginia. So this is a power purchase agreement, and what it means is, there's no upfront cost to you. We own the system. I think the simplest way to describe it is, you're paying two electric bills, you're paying us for the solar we produce, and you're decreasing your utility cost, and we're selling you the power at less than what you're paying the utility. So, another way to describe it is, your basic risk is if, we're doing projections, obviously, but if utility prices would happen to go below what you're committed to paying us per kilowatt hour. We built in a 3% escalation factor for the utility. That's pretty conservative. Of all of our projects around the state of Virginia, we've never been anything but conservative. In other words, these numbers are the most conservative, given what we know now. And to the roof question, we would, the next step would be to sign a limited authorization to proceed, which is simply a way of us saying, we're going to come in and look at the roofs, and make sure that they are capable of taking solar. So we would address the kinds of questions that you raised. If there are warranties, we would not compromise the warranty. We would have, and I should say, the review includes structural analysis to make sure it can handle the extra weight. We'd not run into a problem with that, but most of ours go on flat roof membranes, but we actually prefer the metal seam, standing seam, because they just clip on, they don't penetrate. So the, the point about leaks, I've not seen them in metal roofs, but doesn't mean it couldn't happen.
The panels belong to you.
The panels belong to us, and, good point. So the power purchase agreement is a 25-year contract. At the end of 25 years, one of two things happens. Either the panels come off at our expense, or you purchase the panels at pennies on the dollar, and they will produce for another 10 years. And we actually give you projections for 35 years savings, which will run into the million dollars, because at that point, the next 10 years, you're not paying us anything. You could pay us a small amount to maintain. We maintain the system throughout the life. Your facilities people don't have to do anything, we maintain it. We look at it on a daily basis to make sure, because if it's not producing, you're not paying us. So if there's an inverter problem, or whatever, we roll the truck to get it fixed. Any other questions that I haven't touched on?
Next steps would be a limited service agreement between us and you, in order to just find out more before we go into any kind of agreement.
We would bring in an engineer, a structural engineer. Typically, we could do that by just looking at the, at the drawings. We might have to bring somebody to physically look at the buildings, at the roofs. It just depends on what your facilities people have by way of drawings, that would help them decide that it's structurally able. We have done the projection, but that number, the number of panels that we are suggesting, could be adjusted if there were need to do that. In other words, let's say we have too many panels for the weight. We could lower that, your savings would obviously go down a little bit. What we did is take the last 12 months of electric bills and analyze it. And some of your savings could come from peak demand charges. So that's a very quick overview, I know, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Do we have any questions here?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm curious to know, this is really, this seems really excellent, and thank you for putting this together. And your history as a business really means a lot to our community as well. I'm, I'm curious about, like, we do have people who have a lot of know-how locally in the community about, like, we'd like to have sort of the details of the package, of the types of panels that you would, that you would have, and I assume that that would be furnished through, to Dr. Bolt. And then, and then if there were, you know, we have this 25-year amount of time where we could purchase them back, there could be in 10 years, some revolutionary, you know, doubling of solar productivity per panel. As a business, would you likely, likely to switch out for the highly efficient panels? And can you walk us down that road a little?
Sure. Great questions. Number, two points. Number one, there actually, in the contract, there is an opportunity, you could purchase the system in six years rather than 25. If you wanted to pay the cash at that point, buy out the system, it's still less than buying it upfront, about a half. And then your savings, the reason the model works is, most public schools don't have a lot of money in their capital budgets. So that's why the no cost, unless you're unusual. So that's why, and, and the other reason it works is that we, as a for-profit business, to take advantage of the federal investment tax credit and accelerated depreciation, which you can't take, but we can pass those savings along to you. So that's the reason the financial model works. You're, oh, yes. And the other question is, yes. So if efficiencies would happen to ramp up big time, we would analyze that, and if it's financially to your benefit, then we would come in and switch out those panels. I, I should just say, though, the industry basically is saying efficiencies on panels aren't likely to increase that much. What's happening in the industry is battery storage. And right now, we're not installing those, because it's not financially feasible, with one exception. If you want to get into electric school buses, we are in that business now as well. And with bidirectional batteries, you can actually charge a school bus off the solar panels, and then feed that power back into the building. So some schools are starting to do that, particularly in the summertime, when they're not necessarily running the buses a lot. They can charge it during the day, and then run that power back into the building at night, if you need HVAC, for example.
So the bus is a battery in that kind of case?
Exactly. Exactly. And there are grant programs at the federal level for electric school buses. That's a whole, we have even talked about-
Yeah, we don't want to go there, really.
I understand.
I'm just happy to get a solar program.
Understood, understood. But I'm happy to speak to any of those questions, too. Yes.
The other component, the educational component is obviously a big concern to us, and we have a really robust needs program at our school, but this would add a note. But you could just talk about how that integrates, and also, we would have, we don't have a lot of expertise on staff, certainly, but I'm sure people would be interested in being trained.
Great question. So, we partner with a nationally-known entity, NEED, N-E-E-D. And through that, they provide, we provide at no extra cost to the school system, curricular materials that allow you, every K-12 class has curricular materials available to their faculty that meet the SOL standards in Virginia. So kindergartners can learn about solar at their appropriate level, all the way up to grade 12. That's one. Number two, those faculty members, through your director of instruction, would have opportunities to attend seminars in order to learn how to use that curriculum. And number three, there's a throwing solar shade program, which is for juniors and seniors in high school to do research projects and make presentations. And we've had students do that at the national level, as well as in Virginia. That all comes free of charge, it's part of the package.
And, and would we have in our schools, like, something that's really neat for our, a lot of people who have solar panels at their homes, is to see, and chart the difference of, with weather and temperature, and, you know, you can nerd out really good with all of that data. I'm curious about, would we, would we be able to have that readout, you know, available?
Yes, yes.
Would it be cool to have it flashing up as we entered school or something like that?
Absolutely. So the system comes with a monitoring system. That's mostly for our benefit, because we have our people on, every day, in the morning, they check the system to make sure it's working remotely. If it's not, many of those programs can be rebooted and fixed online. If not, they roll the truck. That's one. Number two, you can use that same system to follow the production in real time. So I can, on my smartphone, I can see what some school in Augusta County did today. You can do that. And most of the schools, we're not only doing schools, but that's our number-one market, most of them are putting smart TVs, screens inside the lobby, and you can have all kinds of indices, saying, we saved X number of trees today, this was the carbon offset, you choose, you choose what you want to show. And then your parents, anybody else, can access that in real time, and you can see it, 10 o'clock in the morning, it's starting to go up. That's all part of the system also.
It's part of the package, it's not extra, it's all within-
No extra cost.
Questions, any other questions? Any concerns? I think we're ready to take the next step. So we should pursue the LSA, and then we'll get more information, right?
Just to be clear, this won't happen till 2025?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just to clarify.
Well, it'll take us a while to get our ducks to rot anyway.
Exactly. We, yeah, there's no, as I've said to Dr. Bolt, there's no real rush on this, because the supply chain is affecting the whole industry. And we're having difficulty getting panels right now, just because the American-made companies are now starting to ramp up finally, because of the Inflation Reduction Act. But there's a huge backlog of supply right now. And so the next step would be to do all the due diligence, look at the roofs, do the structural stuff, get everything in line, so that when panels are available-
We're in the queue.
We can do it. And we do use, we subcontract, but it's a company that we've been working with for 10 years now to do the actual installation. They're a Virginia-based company, called GOT, G-O-T Electric. Yeah, GOT Electric.
And I want to tell you, this was just random. I got a random email from one of their, that I called them.
You don't have to confess that.
But I'm just saying, after all I've worked, it was a random email that I found them. So I called them, and he was like, okay. I looked it up, it was a random email I got.
Yeah, and years ago, we did, we got a secure solar futures estimate, and maybe when the technology, and it didn't, it didn't appeal for various reasons.
Really, okay. I, I wasn't personally involved in that one. And I'm not the numbers person, and I'm also not the technical person, but we can provide, I think you were asking for some of the technicals. Part of the issue there is, right now, we don't even know for sure which panels we would be using.
Because it's up to 2020.
Because there are multiple suppliers, and we're hoping that these numbers do not include, but if we can make sure we use American-made products, these numbers would actually improve based on the incentives. But we're trying to be conservative at the moment.
Whatever we do is two years out, so we're just going to take some next steps and stake ourselves for that, and we'll decide when we know what.
So I will work with you, and-
Thank you so much for coming.
Sure.
Appreciate your time away. I don't know how far you came. How far did you come tonight?
An hour from Harrisonburg.
Harrisonburg, right.
Nice spring evening. I wish it was raining, but it was-
Well, thanks for coming, and we'll take our next steps. Do you need anything from us to take next steps?
No, that's consensus report, we can move forward.
We have consensus to move forward? Good, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Is there going to be a lot of excitement here that I should stay?
You never know. You never know.
I spent my life in board meetings.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Appreciate you being here.
Safe trip. That's great, Dr. Bolt. Good work.
Finally found the right one, it makes me happy. Been digging under every rock.
All right, item 4.2 is our wellness policy update, and I'm going to ask Ms. Jackie Tidrick to come to the podium.
Good evening. So I have some school wellness policy updates. So the impetus to this was a federal program administrative review of our school nutrition program, which happened in February of this year. And so the BDOE and the Office of School Nutrition Program, that's, they come in and they do, every five years, they do a review of our federal regulations, like require compliance with the state regulations. So that's of our national school health program. So that's of our national school health program and our school breakfast program. So they came in, and there were some findings that I want to report. The first one was the meal counting claiming that requires some corrective action. So the meal charge policy does not address how like our negative balances will be handled if they are not collected. And we need to establish a procedure for when unpaid meal debt will turn into bad debt and how it will be settled. So once it reaches, we don't collect debt, after 180 days, it turns into bad debt, and there needs to be some language in there to address what happens to that delinquent debt. I think the school board policy was uploaded, correct? They wanted to refer to it. So that's the first corrective action. And so we need to define that as delinquent debt, that's not, it's not deemed uncollectible at the end of the school year, and it's not allowed to be paid by school nutrition program and the federal funds, which we know that. At the end of the school year, we evaluate it and we determine how that will be corrected. Next slide. So the second general area of review was finding of, we just, we had to conduct a triennial assessment, and it's just assessing our wellness policy, our school board policy, and if, how well we're doing in meeting certain standards. So it was found that we need some smart snacks language, so basically making sure that foods meet a certain criteria. And for foods solely outside of the school meal programs, like fundraisers, and foods provided that are like in, like school celebrations, maybe in the classroom as rewards or classroom snacks, we just needed to find, have that language in our policy that we follow smart snacks. And another finding we found that was, they want us to include one evidence-based goal for the following, nutrition education and promotion, physical education and physical activity, and then the other category is activities that promote student wellness. So that was the second finding. Next slide, please. So we continue with that. Also with the, the school wellness policy, we needed, there's some Virginia code requirements, and we need to include the USDA Food Nutrition Service Smart Snack compliant language, there's a, the term again, and we also need to designate just an individual to monitor the fundraisers to make sure that we, our policy states we can have 30 fundraisers that do not meet smart snacks, and we have to be able to document that and make sure that we're not, we're compliant to that, and there needs to be somebody designate to do that. So that was the next school wellness policy update, or corrective action that we'll need. So I talked about a triennial assessment. So the F par, when they came in and did that, we did the triennial assessment, and so that's through the BDOE. And so they don't conduct it, actually. We had a school wellness committee formed, and we argued the wellness policy. And so this is just making sure that we, we are adhering to our policy and we're meeting certain final rule in like the Healthy Hunger Free Act policy, making sure that all those things are checked off. It's conducted every three years, so three years from now, we'll do another one and we'll go through the same review. So we just want to make sure the purpose of this is the compliance of the USDA and those codes, those federal codes and state codes. And we're going to make that available to the public, we're going to post that to the district website, and that's part of the triennial assessment is being transparent and making sure we post it. Have the next slide, please. Okay, so here are the updates that we need, that I'm requesting. The food service policy, which was on page three, if you want to reference it. We need to add the actual unpaid meal charge language that I told you was one of the findings. So here's what I'm suggesting. Bad debt is defined as delinquent debt that is deemed uncollectible at the end of the school year. Bad debt is unallowable in the school nutrition program and cannot be carried over to the next school year. Funds resulting from bad debt cannot be recovered using school nutrition funds. At the end of each school year, the supervisor of school nutrition and the finance director will evaluate all delinquent debt conversion to bad debt. Bad debt will be restored to the school nutrition program from general funds prior to the end of the same fiscal year. And that will be added to the end of the school board policy in that section on page three. That would be the language, so we're addressing bad debt. Next slide, please.
Around that topic, is the school, currently, school nutrition is in charge of collecting, informing and collecting debt. Is that correct? So there's not a different department that spends time on that?
No. Yeah. So the superintendent responsible creating language as far as the nutrition standards, and so on the, on the first bullet is on, as far as the smart snacks. And black is what we already have in our school board policy, and I put in red what should be added. And so it's a recommendation that smart snacks guidelines are followed when considering food for celebration, given as rewards in classroom snacks. So that language incorporated into the policy. And then B is fine, and then C would be an addition to the policy about fundraisers. And so I talked about, there has to be a designate, someone who's following and tracking those. And ideally, the bookkeeper already is tracking fundraisers because she's, you know, working closely with the principals that they're being approved, and she's collecting money. So organically, it just kind of, it's already being kind of done that way. So if we can put in our policy that the school bookkeeper tracks and monitors all food and beverage fundraisers, and each school shall be permitted to conduct on the school campus during regular school hours, no more than 30 school-sponsored fundraisers per school year, during which food or beverages that do not meet the nutrition standards or the smart snacks, they may not be conducted during school meal service times, which we already do. But we're just adding in that designate. Next slide, please. You have a question, Ms. Lemon?
I do, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for so many questions, but one thing that has come up is around fundraisers, like after school hours or around, you know, there's a lot of holiday fundraisers, there's concessions at games and in schools that sometimes don't have a balanced kind of offering. And I know that it might not be a policy thing, but is this the place to think about recommendations for healthy offerings, you know, in those kinds of, in those kinds of settings? Because they do.
I would assume this would be the place, if you want to make that, if you want to make that a policy, so to speak.
I'd like to understand if we can consider nutrition in school-sponsored events, not that we can't ever have an ounce of sugar, but if we can have, you know, if we can offer, if we can consider, if the school board is a part of their place to include, to include an improved nutritional offering at events that our students and staff spend a lot of time, a lot of people eat three meals a day here during the court season or that kind of thing.
That's a good point, and I'm happy to add that in a superintendent regulation that we can probably model that way as a recommendation to encourage, to, you know, align with Commit to be Fit, which we did. This came up before, I can't remember which school board meeting, and since then, I know Courtney Akitz has added healthier snacks to concessions now, so there's root options and different healthier options. So that was a good point, that was made and well taken. So those are things we have to consider. And then, of course, fundraisers are individual student-led sort of things, so those are hard to direct with policy, but it should be.
It might be interesting just to, you know, it might be, it's a big Commit to be Fit area, but to collect, you know, options for fundraisers that might not be additional holiday calories and saturated fat or something like that, you know, just things like that, maybe not a hard policy, but a, but an idea bank for helping.
Certainly, if I, I, Commit to be Fit can take the lead on that and maybe have a collection of recommended fundraisers that are, you know, not the added calories and sugar, you know, that will kind of meet the smart snacks and.
That would be really great things, I think that also.
Because if, yeah, if you have a list or.
When you, when different parents take on.
I'd like to have an option.
Yeah, it shouldn't be mandated, but an option.
Say, all right, you people, now the school's going to tell you how to eat.
No, no, no. I like encouragement, options, having a variety.
We have got lots of healthy lunch, breakfast spread. As such it stands, if it's an option, it's great. I don't think we have any place or any business mandating. Outside of that, I would think a fundraiser for the cookies that go for the kids or for the candy bars or whatever, is that parents' choice. I don't think we have any, any place to step on that and take away those options or even whatever. If we can make it an option, as such it stands, that's a great idea, we can all benefit from it. But I think we're getting into, into the weeds and some sticky mole, sticky mud, telling people that, you know, that it shouldn't be an option for you. It's, it's their choice.
My suggestion isn't, isn't to take away the option, it's just to add on other options that might be, people might not have thought of, because we've done a lot of fundraisers that are lucrative, that also aren't so good for our health. There probably are other fundraisers that we could, that we could add on or we could consider, that's all that I'm saying.
We did that, I think during the launch of Commit to be Fit, I remember that was one of our initiatives with classrooms and alternatives to classroom parties and healthier options, and we've done some things like that before, so we're aligned very well on the Commit to be Fit.
A part of that is to, I plan to publish something that, these are some choices that you can have in place of your classroom parties, you know, for rewards, here's some healthier options. So that is already on my radar, so I'm hoping to have that available to teachers and staff.
Yeah, looking at class fundraisers in the high school, there are a lot of good kinds of food-related fundraisers.
Absolutely, yeah. And so we can put that out there and educate them and give them suggestions, healthier options and.
It's options, it's, again, I'm not suggesting a mandate, I'm just saying.
I understand.
Options.
I understand, yes, noted, yep. All right. Right, so I talked about those, those evidence-based goals and how they were kind of lacking in our policy, so our, our wellness committee kind of got together and put our brains together, and we came up with some really good suggestions to add for the nutrition promotion and education staff, adding the staff or provided professional development training on nutrition and physical activity education each school year. They're getting some of that, we really want to amp it up and, and do that. And add, the district will ensure the promotion of healthy food and beverage choices through school announcements, newsletters, and website postings. And that is part of what I was saying, how I wanted to post that and get that out there, healthier choices for parties, fundraisers, you know, here's a smart snack calculator you can go on and kind of see what you're doing, is it fit that, you know, the requirements. So those are two additions to that. And then physical activity, we promote physical activity in the classroom outside of planned instruction with the expectation teachers provide one brain break every 30 minutes of instruction. We know kids kind of like a computer will go idle on computer screen, computer screen they go idle for like 20 minutes and just, it can be a quick brain break, doesn't take 30 seconds, a minute or two to kind of, you know, wake up the brain and give them that pause and instruction and just to reset the brain. The next one is classroom teachers receive resources and annual training on promoting physical activity and integrating physical activity in the classroom. So part of that discussion has been maybe in professional development or having those resources available and giving them those things where they can be comfortable doing that in their classroom. The next one is other school-based activities that's in our policy. So we would like to add, RCPS will provide health promotion communications to parents and caregivers, families, and the general community on the benefits of and approaches to healthy eating and physical activity throughout the school year. Families will be informed and invited to participate in school-sponsored activities, and we'll see that information about health promotion efforts. These health promotion efforts include health and wellness newsletters sent to RCPS families. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
So back on slide seven, there's language that we're about to add to food service policy, and it speaks about, the very last sentence, bad debt will be restored to the school nutrition program from the general funds prior to the end of the same fiscal year, so zero, basically, we're going to make sure it's zeroed out before we start another fiscal year. And so, which I understand, but my immediate thought, of course, is, well, how much is that? Because that's going to come from somewhere, right? It's going to come from our budget somewhere, and it's good to know an estimate of what that might be, if you have any history with it. Also, if I recall, there's been some philanthropy in our community historically that has paid that off, I think, right? And we can't just take that for granted, obviously, but somehow or another, I'm hoping there's a way to tie all these things together and that I don't end up with a $25,000 debt that I was not expecting.
Well, that was part of our hesitation, too, when we were talking with the person coming to do the assessment, and, you know, language like that tells you upfront, we're going to pay for it anyway, so.
It does, it does.
And that was my issue a little bit with it, but, you know, it's, it has to be paid.
It has to be paid.
It can't be transferred, so they're, and they need it in the policy to say.
Right, and the law says we're going to feed them.
Yeah, the law says, yeah.
So all I'm saying is, just that we know what we're saddling up as an estimate annually, if we have a way of estimating that. And what, you know, whoever these philanthropic people are that are giving and have been for years annually.
Yes.
I'm not sure how to integrate that so that that flow, if the people desire it, continues.
Well, and remember, this year, it was a really, such an anomaly, because typically we're seeing about $1,100 at the end, by like December, end of December of bad debt, bad lunch debt, and then, or delinquent debt, rather. And this year, we saw over $11,000 in the same timeframe.
You've got to be kidding.
No, so it really spoke to, I think, a lot of shifts, because we had been conditioned to have providing free meals.
Oh, free meals, right.
You know, and we did send out communications about that shift, but it was still, it also spoke to the nature of the economic hardships of the families as well and staff. So it was eye-opening for us, and the philanthropic dollars did cover part of that. We were able to cover the rest of it with another grant through the Department of Health that we found and wrote that grant to take care of it, so this year, we're okay. Next year, we have possibly some exciting news, would you like to share that?
Well, we, we meet the provision where elementary school will be getting free breakfast and free lunch, or CEP.
Really?
Finally.
Yes, yes, just the elementary school, just because they need the free and reduced rate, they do it based by each school. But elementary school will receive free breakfast and free lunch.
I don't count the lunch.
For all students.
For all students.
And that's based on having people, more people who filled out the federal forms and.
Free and reduced, and then we're certified at social services, too, so direct certification.
That will significantly reduce the amount of debt you have for paying folks for that reason, and also, I know Jackie and her team have really amped up the communications to families as well about that.
Yeah, it kind of lends, the conversation is, that, us meeting that criteria kind of lends to the fact it was COVID, people are really struggling and the need for, in this community, and it really has come at a really opportune time, because I think this time is the time where families are really struggling. So we were elated when we got the news, so we'll be advertising that, yeah.
That's great, that's great. And so as next year matures, it's good for us to kind of know, or to get a. or to get a pulse on how the bad debt is accruing, I guess, basically just here at the house.
And we can give periodic reviews of that, but this year, like I said, was an anomaly. And after they amped up those conversations about collecting it, they did receive a lot more and reduced the debt significantly already. So I don't see it being much more than a few thousand a year to try to cover.
Good. But it's good for the people to know, too, not just us.
Of course.
It's good for the people to know what we're managing.
Yeah, and the key, some of the key to that is, too, is, you know, back to school night, making sure we have conversations with the parents, letting them to know, sometimes they meet the criteria and they really don't realize it. So having those important conversations with the free and reduce application and, you know, starting it off that way.
Right.
Making that a conversation with the parents.
Yeah, and having those, the sign-ups online right at back to school night, I think is a really great move.
That in the past has really helped, I know.
As many computers as we have.
Yeah.
Just apply.
Correct.
You're not sure, do it anyway.
Yeah, so we'll be onsite back to school night to make sure that we guide parents and give them the information that they need to find those resources.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any other questions? It's been a very educational night.
Well, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Get yours.
And this will be something that will require board action at this meeting so that Jackie can take care of that.
Yeah, so I can report it, yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jackie. Jackie is our Commit to Be Fit coordinator, and she also runs the food nutrition department as well as a supervisor. So she's doing a lot. We appreciate that. Item 4.3 is our annual federal programs applications. So I will pull that up really quickly and go through again which each of those are. And these will require your approval as well. So ESEA Title Programs, Elementary Secondary Education Act Title Programs. Title 1 Part A is Improving Basic Programming. Title 2 Part A is your teacher and administrator training. Title 3 is your language construction for your language, limited English proficient students or L students. Title 4, Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. So your Title 1, next year, we're looking at an increase array from the federal government of $11,220, bringing that total amount to $168,586. That really is used for primarily personnel. That covers 70% of your reading and math interventionists, or rather, your reading specialists. And then some paraprofessional salary that's commensurate with the amount of time that those folks spend servicing their Title 1 students. There's some related benefits to that. We also cover some online intervention programs, materials and supplies that they might need for those interventions. There is a provision in there that we have to provide out of Title 1, some transportation for homeless students should that arise, which is, you know, can happen. And then family engagement. Title 2, we receive $27,000. Those are your funds that help with your professional development, tuition assistance, your recruitment, conferences and trainings, and degree program cohort support. So that's part of the funds we use, and you can see why we try so hard to get that best-in-class teacher wellness grant because $27,000 to fund all of the trainings that you have to do to meet the mandates falls far short on what you have to do. Title 3, $4,259, which is an increase of $306.
And 21 cents.
Yay, 21 cents. Here's a quarter. Funds will be used to support our 35-plus identified L students. It's amazing. So purchase intervention materials and supplies to promote progress in meeting the WIDA proficiency standards, which are your language proficiency standards that all students have to meet depending on the level that they're at. And then this funds our meet and greet event, which was a great turnout, I understand, and supports some after-school tutoring as well. So that's what those funds are used for. Title 4, we receive an increase again of $2,151.69, bringing it to $13,500. That's a nice funding source that's fairly recent, and that really helps us with gap funding for uninsured folks who may need counseling services, some restorative practices. That's where we get some funding for our trauma-informed training, our positive behavior intervention, social skills, and some after-school hotline services. So it's a really great fund. We do utilize that and with our wellness center program, too, that helps with gap funding for those services as well.
Is this a hotline that's a national hotline that we tap into, or is it?
This is our own. This helps keep that going, yeah.
Our own local house.
Yes.
Yes.
So the ESA formula, Title 1 Tiered Interventions, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4 equals success for every student. So if you add all these together, that's how we help. Carol made this slide. It's so cute. Any questions? Same funding streams every year, but every year you do have to apply.
Yep.
And they're all significant applications, so it does take some time.
And they all have to be reported, then.
Oh, yeah. And there's protocols that are this thing that go with each one. So it's, that help us remain compliant with all of that information. All right, and the final report of the superintendent is our policy updates. So these ones are under review to hopefully be approved at the July 11th meeting. So those are just posted, that you can work through those.
Yep.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Grimsley.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to the report from Headwaters.
I have a Headwaters report. Let's see, I communicated with Mr. Noli. The after-school enrichment program concluded on May 17th with the year-end party, and parents and students enjoyed grilled hot dogs, thanks to our local lion club, Lions Club, and Pudding Mr. Grove. And parents enjoyed presentation from the martial arts at Totality, and the drama club did really a sort of a modern rendition of Beauty and the Beast. It was really fun to see. Headwaters Summer School Enrichment Program started on June 5th, and it's currently serving 33 children in the summer school program. And throughout the month of June, attendees are going to receive outdoor playtime enrichment activities, and some of them are pottery, interesting sports with T.C. Williams, mosaic making, rock painting, water games, and more fun things to incentivize attending the valuable summer school program. The summer chorus and drama programs begin on June 19th, and they will run through the 30th of June. And then on June 30th, the students will perform their music and their skit, all in one performance at a high school on this very stage at 5:30. And everybody can come. Headwaters is also working with schools, enhancing the READ program, which will begin again in fall 2023. And the hope is to reach more students who need help reading and writing, especially in those crucial K through ages. And they're reviewing other programs that, like nationally renowned programs to tweak and update what READ is doing. That's what I have.
Thank you. On the 30th, is that chorus and?
It's combined, yeah. Yeah, it's a combined, combined for both, both of them. So there's a, like, a half-day program for each. Students can choose one or the other or both.
30th is a Friday night.
That's right.
Friday night at 5:30 right here.
Right here.
Right.
On this very stage.
Great. Dr. Grimsley, were you going to cover the?
I can. We did not meet, but we are meeting this Thursday, actually here. The governing board from our office is coming to.
Oh, wow.
The elementary school library. So we will go there. I mean, the gym, sorry. Thank you.
All right, moving on, there is a board retreat planned for next Tuesday night, which is an open session. Anyone can come. We're going to be meeting at Larry's auxiliary building at Larry Grove's house, and the address is 25 Build Ridge Farm Lane in Woodville, if you're interested in attending. The board's going to be there. Our agenda looks like this. Called to order, accepting the agenda, reviewing protocols, norms and protocols, discussion of the strategic plan, and adjournment. So it's planned to start at 6:00 to be over at 8:00, and it's a time for the board in a retreat format. They facilitator to discuss those types of governance topics. So that's where we'll be a week from tonight. Any questions or comments about that? So I'll see you there. Mr. Grove will be better about it. He's promised me he's going to feel better about it. All right, moving on to public comments. Does anybody like to address the board this evening? Moving on to action items, is there a motion to approve the water, water management?
We discussed that.
We discussed water.
We didn't discuss.
I don't think we had Robyn discuss that. I think that's loaded.
That's got.
I didn't read any of that.
Yeah, I was wondering.
It's not there. We'll have to put it off till next month.
Should it be the solar? We don't need a motion to pursue the solar thing at this point.
It's not loaded.
No, it's not there. So I don't see it.
It wasn't in the beginning of our PowerPoint?
No.
I didn't see. I looked at it.
It was.
All right, let's take a timeout here and see.
It was not very.
Facility update?
No.
No.
It's not there.
No, it's not. So I guess that'll get moved.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see anything about it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to table that one.
Table?
Table.
Is there a motion, 8.2, is there a motion to approve federal program applications?
So move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bonham. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, is there a motion to approve the nutrition policies presented?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, is there any new business this evening?
Yeah, I have one that I just wanted to ask for a report out on, and maybe the nonprofit Family Futures is, you know, it's very, it's very much tied to the school board. And I realize as I, as I prepare a detailed report about Headwaters, which is another nonprofit that's tied to the schools, I'm wondering how frequent, if there's something within Family Futures, they should be reporting to us pretty frequently. Like, we haven't heard from them in a long time, and I really would like to understand.
Report from them.
What's going on? Are they, I'd like to figure out a protocol for a regular, not, maybe not monthly report, but regular reporting.
Couple times a year?
Yeah, at least twice a year, maybe quarterly. Dr. Grimsley might have a suggestion for how often that would be, but it's.
Sure.
Very much part of the RCPS brand.
Big time.
Yes, and I think that's a great idea. Know what's going on and not be surprised by questions about it.
Yeah, and they have had some turnover, and we have a new executive director there. So I'm sure he would love to present as frequently as this board would like to hear from them. In particular, I know we're doing a lot of work. I'm actually presenting to their board in July, just about some shifts on profile of a graduate, life readiness, and that whole concept because it has changed and they've had new board members and bring back to some of our comprehensive plan goals and as we did write them into that. So we are realigning some strategic planning with them, too. So it'd be a good time to.
Yeah.
Have them come, so.
If you're going to, if you've been asked to go brief them, one of your topics could be, when can you come visit?
Exactly. That's perfect.
So maybe we'll just get them on the agenda sometime.
And it might make sense for us to think about having a, you know, a board member liaison with that organization as well, being as, I don't know why we treat them differently from Headwaters. I mean, I don't, it seems like it's good for our communication with Headwaters, and it might be, it would, it could be a good idea to consider having a liaison. My understanding about the Headwaters liaison was that it was just to create better flow of communication and information and make sure we, you know, this program that's aligned, that's part of our school is speaking the same language as our board. I was curious about that or how that got set up. I don't know how.
You could, you could broach the topic when you're there and join.
Yeah, yeah, and because it's, it's something that I haven't heard about.
No, and that makes sense. And they do usually give an end-of-year update, end-of-year report. They have done that. They haven't done it this year yet. And I know there's been some turnover and stuff. And usually Jenny Capsack comes, and prior year, Annie Yeoman did. So we'll see how they want to present out. But there is a lot of shifting in the direction of implementing that curriculum in a different way that we're actually very excited about. So I'll, but I'll let them kind of share that.
Yeah, so.
And I do meet with them every month.
Yeah, so if any of you reported on, then it would be great to see them sometime.
All right, is there any other new business? Is there any requests for future agenda items? Our next board meeting is July the 11th at 6:30 in this very same place. And at this time, we're going to entertain a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Meyer, I believe you have.
I have it right here. I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purposes, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, classified positions, coaching positions, resignation of professional positions, and retirement of professional position pursuant to the Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Welcome back.
A motion from Ms. Meyer, is there a second?
Okay.
Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, we're going to go into the room next door. We'll be back in.
10, 15.
10 or 15 minutes, and we'll conclude the meeting for this evening. If you want to hang out.
Yeah, that would be great.
All right, thank you for waiting. We've just come out of closed session, and we need to certify that only things related to the motion were discussed during closed session.
Chris Rubin certifies.
Rachel Bonham certifies.
Wesley Mills certifies.
Lucy Ann Martin certifies.
Is there a motion to adopt the personnel report this evening?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, we have a new assistant principal at the elementary school, Dr. Grimsley.
Absolutely, we do. We're happy to officially have approved and appoint Jackie Low Barton as our new elementary school assistant principal. She is really wonderful, has a great deal of experience, and I know the interview team felt very comfortable moving her along, especially with her background with special education, mental health, and alternative education. Those are things that are of high need, behavioral health, those types of things for the elementary, and that's an area that I think the team was really looking for. She's a great instructor and her, she taught eighth grade math for us this year, and her scores look great. So she also has strong instruction. So we're very pleased with that.
Can you mention our new band director in the?
Oh, sure.
Oh, I can. So we are also appointing Darrell Fuller from La Cire as our new elementary music/middle school band director. He comes with a great deal of experience as well. I think he's got 11 years there, and his band has won multiple awards. He's been composing since he's been 17, and we're really thrilled with his energy in working with Kalia Page in developing the Fine Arts Academy.
And I'm just glad to, I want to comment that it's a wonderful group to bring back that position, which we had reduced earlier. And that's a good direction for our division. We're excited.
And the, and the building out of that Arts Academy Foundation. So it should be an exciting year to see that progress. All right, thank you all for coming tonight. Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Bonham. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And means adjourned. Thanks for coming.